Good evening, everyone. This is the March 26th meeting of the Revere City Council. Would everyone please rise to salute the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo is absent. Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Janino.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of March 19th, 2018.
So ordered.
Calendar item number three, public hearings, in ordinance amending the zoning ordinances of the city of Revere relative to billboards.
At this time, we'll call any proponents? Are there any proponents that wish to speak?
I'm speaking on behalf of Carol Haney, 72 Fowler Avenue. Sorry about that. I'm speaking on behalf of the Beautification Committee, as you probably all know. As you all know, the Revere Beautification Committee is committed to improving the city of Revere. We have worked and continue to work very hard to achieve this goal. We accomplish this by working with the city, with local businesses, and with the residents. Tonight's ordinance is an example of this cooperation. The RBC worked closely for many years with the mayor's office and the city council to produce a billboard ordinance that will positively impact the future of the city and enhance the lives of its residents. And tonight, we have one. The RBC urges the council to pass this ordinance as it is a win for the city and for all who live in it. Our special thanks to the city planner Frank Strangie, excuse me, and city solicitor Paul Capizzi, whose expertise was invaluable in the drafting of this document, and to Bob Haas, who was a driving force in obtaining the approval of the moratorium that gave us the time necessary to complete the job. I must congratulate also my fellow RBC-er, Ron Shampoo. Without his extraordinary efforts and perseverance, we would not be here tonight. I must warn everyone, as you probably all know by now, when Ron gets a B in his bonnet, he will not let go and will work with every fiber in his being to make things right. Well done, Ron. Thank you.
I'd just like to briefly just say that we've all been together discussing this issue now for almost seven years, and I think we have been able to develop a billboard ordinance, a really comprehensive billboard ordinance, which we've been asking for. Frank has been tremendously helpful, looking through every single piece of billboard information, and so has Paul Capizzi. They have contacted other cities, and I think this is something that will work for the city, and it's, like I said in the beginning, it's another piece, another way the city is turning around. We're going in the right direction with all sorts of things in the city. Let's keep going. We need to be on this road. Okay? Thanks.
I agree 100%.
Any other proponents here wishing to speak? Any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents that wish to speak?
I hate to be in a...
Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening to the members of city council, city clerk. Clerk, I hate to be an opponent of anything when it comes to beautification, as I am my wife is being the chairperson, the beautification committee in the city next door, and I being a part of the committee. And I understand I truly sometimes in some parts of the city do not really favor billboards where residents live, in places like Broadway, or Main Street, or in the thickly settled neighborhoods, but in this zoning ordinance, it has no place for digital billboards. I have a business, as you know, for the last 20 years, and I've had a freestanding sign there that's been there since before Santoros. And I just, in this ordinance, I would think that there'd be something where you could, if allowed, to put a digital sign, you could take maybe two signs away from the neighborhood where someone would be given one sign. I read this, and basically, you still keep, it's still status quo. The ban will never lower the amount of the pre-existing billboards in the city. By doing something where allowing a digital billboard in a different district, but they would have to reduce the amount of billboards in the city, you can go from 72 that you have now, hopefully down to 36. So I'm just asking to see if that Squire Road, or the section that I operate a business in, would have the opportunity to supplement my income in this area, able to advertise businesses. As you know, Squire Road is not in the middle of the city. It's really pretty much a highway. Speeds are aggressive. There's no children's cross, there's no schools, there's no houses. They're behind us, but not on the road itself. That's it. I really don't have much more to say. I appreciate what the Beautification Committee is doing between the islands, the city, the flowers. Broadway looks amazing, between the lighting, the flags, the flowers. I mean, it truly looks great, and I agree in their mission, and I would love to help them be part of that. But I ask that you consider adding my district where my business is, and I'm being selfish, but I think that's a good district where if you were to have them, but if they were, again, to reduce the amount, if someone were to be granted one in this district, they would have to reduce the amount of billboards in the city. Again, it's very hard for me to be here, being the mayor of a city next door city, but as you all know, I've been in business in the city for a long time, and I truly, the gentleman behind me is one of my customers, and I hope he's not attached to me, but I just wanted to come here and ask your indulgence, and if that's something that you have an appetite to look at. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other opponents wishing to speak? Are there any other opponents? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. At this time, I'll open it up to city councilors, and keep in mind, this will be going to the zoning subcommittee for final review by the city council as a whole. Any city councilors? We'll start at this side. Councilor Keefe?
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate the work that was done, much like Mr. Shampoo and some of the members of the Revere Beautification Committee had brought forth, some really good recommendations. This has been something that's been on the table for a number of years. I've spoken to Ron, and I know that Councilor Haas was very supportive of this type of work. I would also say, and I know I'm not a member of the zoning committee, but I think, and I have to give some respect to Mayor Di Maria and his honesty as a business person, and we want to be business-friendly in the city as well. I would like to see some form of a reduction of billboards. Now, that doesn't mean I support his billboard. I don't really know a whole lot about his billboard. I would probably do some research into that, but I would, and I think the beautification committee, and I think the billboard committee, would like to see some form of reduction. We do have approximately 70-plus in the city, probably more than any of our neighboring cities and towns, probably more than most in Massachusetts. So if there was a way for us to formulate some language in that, and I know I had mentioned this before, to see a reduction with making good decisions on where the billboards would come into play, obviously coming to some form of agreement, I would be amicable to that. That would be my opinion. Outside of that, I think that you drafted, everyone drafted a really nice piece of business here, so most likely be even very much support with potentially some small adjustments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So there was about eight of us that got together once a month, and we worked on this ordinance. A lot of things were said, a lot of ideas went back and forth, but I think we drafted this ordinance. First of all, I just want to say that we have the most billboards in Massachusetts, Revere. Okay? Out of any other city, we have the most. We're trying to change the concept and the stigma of Revere. We want, we don't want any more billboards. We really don't. I think it just, it looks trashy. I think it's a distraction, especially the digital billboards. I think the purpose of us all getting together and working hard on this ordinance was to get rid of the billboards, or to limit the billboards. So I just think it's a quality of life issue for the residents of Revere, and I am not in favor of putting any more billboards, and I'm sorry if, you know, I'm sorry, but I just don't feel that we should put any more billboards up in Revere. We should maintain the ones we have, and if people want to eliminate them, then that's great, but I don't think we should put any more billboards in Revere. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Morabito?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I want to thank the Beautification Committee for their hard work. As a former member of the Beautification Committee, I know how dedicated they are to their mission of keeping the city clean. They work tirelessly, and they work for free, and they do it because they love it. With that said, I know they worked countless hours. I met with Ron maybe, what, about five years ago? Then we, then he took it into mission while he was doing research. Then we met again with Patrick Keefe. So I gotta hand it to the entire committee, but especially Ron Shampoo, for his dedicated hard work. And I admire that Mayor Di Maria's honesty, that he wants a billboard. I really wish he was, he had a say years ago, or like within the last six months, when we were really running rampant with this motion, and really crossing our Ts and dotting our Is. With that said, I'm a firm believer in this billboard motion, and I would look, I would be an advocate to, as I spoke to Ron earlier, to maybe change something down the road, or include a district with the approval of the city council's permission, but as of right now, I approve the motion as is.
Thank you, Councilor Morabito.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Most of the folks know that I love writing ordinances, and I've had a few passed over the past few years since I became a councillor, and this is really an excellent, excellent piece. I know a lot of hard work was put into it. To have a couple tweaks that we'll talk about in the committee, but nothing serious, but I'd just like to have some questions on it. But I know the state signage control board, whatever they have, it has a big say in a lot of this stuff, too. And unfortunately, we may be getting to it, the MBTA station at the garage. You know, I know there's a open comment period from the MBTA and the Commonwealth of Mass. But the one thing that I want to work with you on, and Carol knows what I'm going to say, and I need this help, is to try and control our newspaper racks. I know that's been a big issue for me for many years. I have a lot of paperwork in the house, and it's, you know, I don't like them. You know, like, most of us don't like billboards, or as many as what we have, but, and I know we're going to be getting rid of some, hopefully getting rid of some of them down in Oak Island that fell apart, so, but, great job. Look forward to working with you in the committee and talking about those few items. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Guanasso?
Thank you, Madam President. I also attended most of the meetings regarding the new ordinance. I saw a group of people that were anxious to make improvement to our community. I saw them with the desire to do better for all of us, and I applaud them for their efforts. I appreciate Mayor Di Maria coming up and speaking on behalf of the Honeydew Restaurant donut shop that he has, and, you know, I appreciate the concern that he might have for what might take place there on his rooftop. But this group has worked feverishly for this endeavor. I think that maybe if the mayor comes to the subcommittee, if he can talk to some of the members, or maybe have some reasoning of some sort, I have no idea, but all I can do say is that this ordinance as presented is extremely well thought of, and they took pains to make sure that every avenue was really traveled, and they did a wonderful job in doing that with the assistance of our city personnel. So I look forward to the zoning subcommittee meetings in reference to this, but I think that what they have presented with us this evening is a great package. You deserve all the praise in the world, and you've worked so hard on this behalf, and I know over the years you've expressed your views on this, and to make it reach this point, it must be a great sense of achievement, and I applaud you for your efforts, and again, working on behalf of the community, we appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I want to thank the Beautification Committee. Especially me and Ron, we've been going way back on these billboards. I thought it was more than seven years, but it seems like forever. And in the past several months, I made sure that I made the meetings to put this, help put this together. I basically didn't have much input, because we let them take control of the meeting and put forth what they thought was best for the city. I just want to bring out also the Honorable Mayor of Everett. After we talked today, I went down and took a look, because I've been in that store, I don't know, several times a week, and either for meetings, or, you know, just for coffee. And I could never remember seeing a billboard. But you do have a lovely sign on the roof that you could, I could see you spent some serious money fixing that sign. I don't know if, is that what you consider the billboard? I don't, if you want to answer a question, I don't know. Is that the billboard you're talking about? The sign on the roof?
Well, the building department doesn't have any research on that, because the sign goes back, you know, a good time, you know, before Santoros, and we all know Santoros is there in the 1970s. The sign is not attached to the building. It's detached from the building, so it doesn't, has no connection, so, I mean, if you see it, it actually had posts on it where it advertised more than one business, and I think that may be somewhat, you know, in a court of law, maybe, or somewhere, that that could be a pre-existing billboard sign. I don't know. So, I mean, my thought was just if, you know, if we could, you know, lower the amount of billboards around the city by including this is part of the district, and maybe if there's a way to find out that it was a pre-existing sign. It took me this amount of time to get here, because I've been in, I've had some issues with my landlord for the last few years, just got out of, basically, we settled our issues, so that's why it took so long to get here, but I've been wanting to come before you for a long time, and then you were in the moratorium. So, again, your current ordinance here does not ever take away any billboards. My proposal will take your billboards from 76 to 32, if were to be allowed. I think, being someone who frequents these neighborhoods, I see some of those decrepit old billboards that we're talking about. Rest assured, there'll be someone who will restore that and put back a sign, because businesses do need to advertise. And with digital billboards, they may not be pleasant, but they also can run lots of, you know, Amber Alerts for you, any issue you may have. The Little League may have opening day, whatever it is, they guarantee a lot of hours back to the community. There are a lot of pros, I can send you that stuff before your next hearing. I'm sorry I'm joining come lately here, and I apologize, and I don't want to put any stress on you, and I don't want to offend the members of the Beautification Committee who's done a wonderful job. To have a group of people who are not paid to do this type of work, they should be commended. To answer your question, Mr. Patch, I look at it as a win. You definitely want to get, the young lady said, this is a win-win for the city of Revere. I think the win-win would be get rid of 76, down to 32 would be even a better win, and have, you know, and then have them in the business district, which I am, paying business district taxes for many, many years, but, you know, not in, you know, not in the residential neighborhood, and that's all. I don't want to belabor.
All right. I just, I wanted to know if that was the billboard on top...
Sorry, Charlie, I took you 10 minutes to answer. But I am an elected public service member, Charlie.
I know that, but also, I mean, by, you only own, you don't own other billboards, so how can you reduce other, the billboards if you just fix your billboard?
Yeah, and I'm going to come before the zoning board, a few of the people, but what they do is they, the billboard companies buy out the existing billboard leases. So let's say you have a billboard on Broadway, and you're getting paid by Clear Channel $4,000 a month or something. What they do is they buy your lease out, tear down the billboard, get rid of it, and they pay the $4,000 out of my billboard's proceeds. That's how they do it, which is very good, and we're looking at it ourselves. And, you know, those billboards add no value. You gotta go up there, add the paper, and they're always ripping down, no matter what it is, on Ferry Street, and every, you see it happens all the time, they're always ripping. These digital billboards, for some reason, they don't bother me. They don't. They do bother others. We permitted a digital billboard on Route 16 last month in the city of Everett, but they do bother some. I think what bothers me is the old ones, the ones that are on top of buildings that obstruct the views of people's properties. They bother, like they probably bother the members of the Beautification Committee.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other council?
I actually agree with him. I'm for, I prefer digital over the paper ones, because I know in the past that I had to have Clear Channel fined a few times for the paper flapping in the wind for, I don't know, weeks at a time, and so I do prefer the digital over the paper, but I still like what we did in the past six months, and I don't see any reason for changing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I want to compliment the Beautification Committee, not only for this billboard ordinance, but for all of the work they've done over the years throughout the city, trying so hard to make this city a better place to live. And this is done not for compensation, it's, they're motivated by compassion and concern for their city, and that's a very positive thing. Myself, with regard to digital billboards, maybe in a certain area, they're fine, but I think that Squire Road is so impacted with businesses, cars coming in and out constantly, it's very difficult to pull out there safely because of the traffic. And I find that digital billboards, when people see them, they're looking up at them, and they're destructive, and to me, that's a major concern. There was one proposed down at 107, near the circle, and I was 100% against that, okay? And I certainly couldn't support this. I'm not anti-business. As a matter of fact, if I remember, years ago, there was a drive-through proposed at that location, and I did support it, 100%. I thought it was the right thing. But I cannot support this in good conscience, and I will certainly support the wishes of the conservation, for the Beautification Committee, for the, based on the fantastic job and their concern for the city. It's not, it's not artificial, it's legitimate, and it should be noted by every councillor and every citizen in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Rizzo?
Madam President, thank you. I hadn't planned on speaking, but seeing as every councillor has, I will just, I will just offer my congratulations and thanks to the Beautification Committee, who I've had the privilege to work with for so many years now in various capacities. So thank you for your hard work and your diligence. I know what you guys can do when you put your minds to it, and most recently, prior to this, was Bell Circle, and how you were able to pull that off is, still puts a smile on my face when I drive by there, knowing all the hard work that you people put into it, and working with our friends over at Comfort Inn. So thank you very much for your hard work and your diligence, and I'd like to, I'd like to thank the mayor of Everett for exposing his plan to possibly reduce billboards, and I am not in opposition to reducing billboards. Clearly, if we could get rid of all of them, quite honestly, that would be, I think, a breath of fresh air for all of us. I don't know if that is something that the committee had considered, or that the subcommittee had considered. I know this is going to subcommittee. If it's something that could lead to a lower number of billboards, and that was something that the Beautification Committee thought was a good idea, then it would be something that I would obviously support, but it would have to have the support of the Beautification Committee, because they were the driving force behind this ordinance change. They are the driving force behind this ordinance change, and so whatever comes out of committee, it needs to have the blessing and the full support of our Beautification Committee, because as you alluded to, Mr. Mayor, they do work very hard, and I think Councilor Morabito said they work hard because they love it, and I think I'll take it a step further, they do it because they love Revere. And, you know, I just want to be sure that whatever the final vote, or whenever the final vote does occur, that, you know, it is something that we all walk out of here, you know, and I understand fully, you're part of the Revere business community, and we appreciate that, but, you know, we want, you know, we want to walk out of here, you know, knowing that the right thing was done, and that the goal here is to help further beautify the city of Revere, and so when we, when it comes to a final vote, with the support of the Beautification Committee, I will be voting that way. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councillors wishing to speak? Mr. Shampoo?
Could I just say something? I love his onion bagels. It's the truth, but...
Said all it takes is an onion bagel?
I tried to stay there.
It's over now.
And I only eat half of it, too. But I just, there's a little misunderstanding for part of this, and that's what you had alluded. One of our goals is not to get rid of every billboard, it's illogical, but to decrease the amount, and with the help of one of the councillors in the past, came up with a plan, you know, so that we could reduce the amount of billboards specifically on Broadway. But this plan does have that. I don't know whether you've fully read it. This plan has it, and what it does is it restricts them to the Ted District, and on the McClellan Highway, you have the opportunity down there where Clear Channel or the other individuals, the predominant billboard owner in this city, it isn't one guy, it isn't two guys, it's, I mean, excuse me, it is Clear Channel. They own, I forget the exact amount, billboards in the city. But we allowed that, and we gave freedom, if you can remember, in the meeting, so that the council, they could come to the council in the, you know... the council, they could come to the council in the, you know, if they owned a billboard in the Ted District, and say, "Look, we're interested in putting, changing a billboard over here to a digital." And they would be allowed to do that, but it would be up to the council to make the determination of what the cost would be. In this case, in the past, it was two billboards, for one billboard, you know, take down two, take down four, well, it was four, right, two sides. So there was four billboards able to be eliminated. So that is in the bill, in this ordinance. So we're protected, and I think that's what we've tried to do. This is an omnibus bill. I hate to use that word, but it is. This covers everything. It covers digital signs. I'm a little bit confused. I talked to the mayor about his issue of our billboard, but this bill addresses this issue like digital signs. So it covers all sorts of things. It covers no more billboards, only so many digital billboards in the city, where they're located. It also covers digital signs, and it covers one last thing, and that's for the, you know, fines for individual, for billboards that are not taken care of properly. So that's all I got to say. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Champeau. Any other members of the council wishing to speak?
Can I say something? On behalf of Carlo, David Di Maria, 226 Coles Street, Revere, and 20 Purchase Street in Bedford. Carlo has lost a lot of business because of Market Basket in terms of coffee, and I feel maybe he's trying to make up for that, I don't know. But Everett's a good city, the casino's looking great, nothing against Revere, I see a lot of potential in this, in Revere, my hometown, and I'm very proud of it. And you guys are terrific. I go to other cities, and you don't see the cooperation at all. Ron, Carol, I see Carol in the morning sometimes, Ron's over on Stevens, it's a nice area. But people are going to start coming back, I think, if they haven't left already, and there's nothing wrong with this city, nothing at all. I'm very proud of it, again. And there's some other things I wanted to mention, but I'm very, very happy as to what's going on. In terms of the degrading of the billboards, there's a couple of billboards on Broadway that aren't there anymore, by Walgreens, by the fire station, and on Proctor Avenue. And I don't like the electronic ones. I think we, the one down on Oak Island Riverside, that's damaged. You've got trains running through here, the commuter rail, and there's a lot of highways, a lot of traffic, but we can take advantage of that. And again, maybe, you know, build another school. McMackin is wide open across the street, on Witherspoon Avenue, down on the Parkway, you know, build a school maybe going higher, and they still have the high school available, too. But I see these other towns doing it like Winthrop, and a boys' club would be nice, too. There's one of those in Bedford that's brand new.
Are we sticking to the billboards?
Yeah, the billboards, in terms of the billboards, just to finish up, I'm all for it. I fully support Mayor Di Maria, and he's a very nice guy, nice family. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing as there are no other comments, if I may briefly speak from the chair, this has been something that the, thank you, the City Council and subcommittee, subcommittee on billboards has been working on. I really want to thank my colleague, Councilor Haas. This is something that he worked diligently on, and this is something, I think, as a council, if we could do in memory of him, I think it really does serve to his dream for this motion, so it's something special to the whole council. I think because of that, I want to thank the Beautification Committee for their hard work, along with Paul Capizzi and Frank Stringi, who were vital to helping us write this. And one of the reasons why this goes to the City Council as a whole is, you know, our subcommittee meets and works on it, and now it will go to the council as a whole to make any final decisions, tweaks, to allow the community to pose any questions, comments, or concerns. So that's why it will be going to the zoning subcommittee, so they can take up any open issues or questions. And I want to thank Mr. Mayor Di Maria for representing the business community, and thank you for being a part of our business community, because it's a great point and something definitely important to look at, because I know that there are probably many businesses that share those concerns, and I think this is the opportunity for us to examine them. So I look forward to working on this with the entire council during that zoning subcommittee. Thank you.
And to make note, Councilor Zambudo was recused from that public hearing. Calendar item number four, hearing call disordered on the application of Ibrahim Elrain, 404 Revere Beach Parkway, requesting an amendment to the zoning map of the city of Revere as follows. Section 1, Title 17 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere, and the zoning map provided by Section 17.12.020 of said title, is hereby amended by extending the boundaries of the TED zoning district by extending the same in an easterly direction in the vicinity of the intersection of Revere Beach Parkway and Pratt Place.
Are there any proponents wishing to speak this evening?
Good evening, Madam President. Honorable Counselors James Cipolletta, 385 Broadway, Revere, on behalf of Ibrahim Elrehani, who's the owner of the property, sought to be extended into the TED district. Just a very concise picture of this property, as you probably well know it, Ibrahim purchased this property about 15 years ago, and he backs up to Suffolk Downs and the Stop &amp; Shop, Shopping Plaza there as well, and he fronts on Revere Beach Parkway. He's located on the corner of Pratt Place and Revere Beach Parkway, and his property is currently in the Residence B, RB District. That property has never been RB, and 15 years ago, when Ibrahim bought the property, I had the pleasure of representing him, and he had purchased it as an old, broken-down gas station with tanks that needed to be removed and some other environmental concerns that were plaguing both the city and the state. Regulatory authorities, and I think he did an excellent job. He then built his business, USA Motors, to what it is today. I think that in speaking with not only our president, my good friend, Councilor McKenna, and the other councillors who represented Ward 1 over the years about Ibrahim, as well as many discussions with Councilor Novoselfsky 2 over the years, I think that we can say that this has been a very stable and good corporate business neighbor. We are asking by this petition to extend the TED district only by two lots, and that would encompass the lot that is on the west corner of Pratt Place and Ibrahim's, which is on the east corner of Pratt Place, fronting on the Parkway. The corner house, the corner lot on the, to the west, is a multifamily. The owner is here. He's pleased as well by this application, and I expect that he will speak in support of it. The property that Ibrahim owns is never going to be residential property. I think it's going to be what it is, and down the road, after 15 years of building a business, he now wants the opportunity to perhaps sell a couple of cars under a Class II license, which only can be done in a TED district. And to that end, he is asking the City Council to consider extending that TED zone by a mere two lots that would encompass both his neighbor across the way and his business. If there are any questions regarding the zoning, I'd be happy to answer those. Any questions regarding the business, Ibrahim is here. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Attorney Cipolletta. Any other proponents here this evening? Any proponents? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents here this evening? Anyone opposed? Any opponents? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. This time, we'll open it up to councillors. Councilor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This is my ward, and I've met with Ibrahim and Attorney Cipolletta, and I see no problem with this. He's a good guy. He keeps his property very well-kept. I had an issue with him last, about six months ago, where the neighbors in the back had complained about high grass and not him, him not trimming his trees, and the next day, it was all done. So I went into his place, it's spotless, there's no residents that are around him, so I don't see a problem. There are residents in the back, but I, there is a big fence there, so I don't see a problem with this at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McKenna. Any other councillors wishing to speak?
Madam President, if I may, just because I know the gentleman personally and have known him for quite some time, and, you know, this, I think, can be an example of how we work with our business owners in a positive way. You know, when somebody commits that much time toward their business, trying to do the right thing, trying to make an honest living, and we have the chance to help that business owner, you know, progress and move along in a positive way, this is the type of thing that I think we ought to be doing. So I know this will be going to committee, but just, Madam President, I just want to let you know, I will be supporting this change, and, you know, on a personal level, I think you have a quality businessman here who has certainly earned my support, and I'm hopeful that he earns the support of my colleagues. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. Full disclosure, I have my car serviced at this establishment. I get my inspection sticker there. I've known him a long time. It's a first-class business. And my colleague to my right spoke about how we should be promoting businesses like this. They came here some 15 years ago, and in full disclosure, they were given some bad, some bad information from the administration at the time. It wasn't intentional, it wasn't, it wasn't done in malice, it was just by accident. The mayor at the time gave some incorrect information that they couldn't do what they wanted to do at the time, and he thought they could, and so they purchased the place. And so they went on, what did they do? Did they, did they storm out of here? Did they sell the business? No. They made do with what they could, and they built a terrific business, first-class, honest. You can't go to a, you know, it's very difficult to go have your car serviced somewhere and feel completely comfortable that they're not going to do something that you don't need. This is the type of establishment it is. This is the type of business I want to promote in Revere, and I'm certainly going to support this, but I urge my colleagues to support it, because it sends a message that if you're a first-class business, you do the right thing, you're honest, this city council is going to help you in any way we can. So that's my take on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Seeing as there are no other councillors, this will be referred to the zoning subcommittee.
Calendar item number five, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Rick Frenney as co-chair of the Commission on Disabilities.
This will be going to appointments?
Calendar item number six, communication from the Director of Finance requesting a transfer of funds in the amount of $15,000 from the Director of Finance Workers' Compensation Account to the Director of Finance All Other Account.
At this time, I want to take a moment to welcome the mayor. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam President. I know the Director of Finance is going to speak probably at length, but I wanted to just inform the council that we will be, so we have certified the highest amount of free cash in recent history, and I want to thank the great team on our finance department, including our Director of Finance, for the great work that they've done. Just very quickly, we've certified $6.2 million in General Fund free cash, another $4.9 million in Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund free cash, and there are a number of transfers that are before you tonight, including transfers to the Stabilization Fund, the Water and Sewer Enterprise Stabilization Fund, and the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund, which we created last year. Those transfers are for our reserves, and they certainly signify a healthy, a healthy amount of reserves for the city and signify our financial strength as a community. The other thing that I want to put on everyone's kind of agenda is that there will be additional, I want to set the expectation that there will be additional capital requests that will be coming before the council out of that capital reserve account, and those will be investments that we make to, to our buildings and to our facilities to make sure that we're making those investments and keeping, and maintaining our property. One other thing is that in terms of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, I am happy to announce that we will have enough free cash to stabilize our water and sewer rates. I know over the last couple of years, certainly ratepayers have carried the burden, I guess is a polite way to say, that they've carried the burden of the consent decree that we've been in over the last couple of years, and this amount of free cash will give us the flexibility to stabilize rates, and that will be coming again before, before this body. But I am in favor of the transfers that will be voted upon tonight, and I look forward to additional conversations about our strong financial health. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Enzoni?
Yes, there's communications for the transfer, according to the city ordinances, as they apply, for the transfer from the, for the $6.2 million, $6,273,580. The city ordinance is required that we, as soon as it's cert, 90 days after the certification, that the city transfer into the Stabilization General Fund an amount of 15%, and the Water and Sewer Stabilization Fund an amount of 15%.
George, I don't want to cut you off, but we haven't got to seven yet, we're still on six. So we have to get through six before we can get to seven.
Oh, go ahead. I, okay, so we'll go back to that, we'll go back to six. On six is a transfer from my Workman's Comp Stabil, excuse me, my Workman's Compensation Salary Account. He set me off.
Wait, nobody's, Director of Finance said she didn't interrupt me in the middle of that.
Yes, I did.
Thank you, Madam President. I apologize to the council. I'm sorry, I jumped the gun a little bit, I apologize.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyway, to go back to six, I don't have an agenda in front of me, and that's my fault. But six is a transfer, I looked at my All Other Account, and I would need $15,000. I took it from the Workman's Compensation Salary Account, and there, the money from the salary account is available because of the fact that we have been very aggressive on making certain that people don't go on Workman's Compensation unless, as always, unless they truly have been injured on the, on the job, and also if they didn't, if they stay on the Workman's Comp, get on there, they don't stay in there longer than necessary. So that's one of the reasons why that money is available, but I do need that money in my All Other Account.
Thank you. Do any councillors have any questions on calendar item number six? No? Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $15,000 from the Workers' Compensation Account to the Director of Finance All Other Account? Councilor Guonasso?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calendar item number seven, communication from the Director of Finance relative to the free cash certification by the Department of Revenue.
Do you want to get back up? Okay, just while you, okay, I want to get back up. So on this is the, again, I will restate that the city ordinance is, once 90 days after the certification of free cash from the Bureau of Accounts, we transfer funds into 15% of that amount into the General Fund Stabilization Account, and then 15% of the Enterprise Water Account that was certified free cash into the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund Stabilization Account. Then there was further, a ordinance passed last year, that we put 20% of the free cash certification into the Capital Improvement Stabilization Account. So there's the three different transfers that would have to be taken up, I believe, separately. If you have any questions, this is the highest certification that the city's ever had. We haven't had, we haven't had free cash, we haven't had a stabilization account for all the time that I've been here. We, I think it started in 2003 or 2004. So looking at that, you can see the buildup, I gave you a chart of the, which included your packet, of the amount of the free cash being certified at $6.73580, and then the General Fund Stabilization Account is at the... I gave you a chart of the, which included your packet, of the amount of the free cash being certified at $6.73580, and then the general fund stabilization account is at the, on June 30th, is $6,445,276, which is also an all-time high. If you add into the amounts, and the amounts that are going into these accounts, you'll raise the general fund stabilization account over $7 million, and if you, the water and sewer account will be up over five, six, actually six, and the 2.3 for the capital improvement, once you make the transfers. The importance of all of this is because when we deal with the financial markets, they want to see our reserves. And there was a conversation, we've had conversations with the financial markets as late as last week, at one point, and the question they asked is our reserves. So, they saw the amount of reserves that came in, they were impressed by that fact, they see how we're handling our reserves, but, and if you take the total monies that we have in reserve, and it's very important we keep these reserves up and don't spend the stabilization portion of it, we're somewhere in the area about, anywhere between 6% to 7% of our total operating budget, where they like you to be, anywhere between 6% to 8%. We're up there, we've reached it. So, that's an accomplishment in and of itself. Again, with that, I've also mentioned a lot about the city, we have a, every city in town has, what they have done is an OPEB report, it's other post-employment benefits, actuarial studies, which is necessary to be attached to our financial statements, I believe it's GASP 74 and 75, and what they do is, what it does is it sets an amount that the city is responsible for in order to fund. Now, the city hasn't started an OPEB account at this time, OPEB being short for the other post-employment benefits, and they're looking for the city to start a reserve fund or, for the OPEB amounts that we need to put in. So, according to the actuarial study, we are behind on that, those payments, and so it's, we haven't done any, so it's time to start it. I'll be sending up another communication to initiate an OPEB, an OPEB reserve fund, and it's a process that takes some passes by the council, and I'll have those up. I've already spoken to a firm and getting them in place to make certain that we're crossing, dawning on our i's and crossing all our t's. So that'll be probably one of the amounts that will be coming out of this free cash. Looking at it, I think that's what I have to report to you tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Just so the council knows, this will be taken up as three separate roll calls, so at this time, I'll ask if any questions are on any of them. We'll start at this end. Counselor Keith.
Thank you. I don't expect to speak very long on this, but obviously, it sounds like really good news. My question to you, George, would be, is this something that we're going to see a continuation of? Do you think that this is what we'll be seeing in the years to come? And obviously, like you mentioned, you don't want to use, be in the mode of seeing it and saying, oh, let's spend it all. We want to use this and continue to certify free cash and build a stabilization fund. But would this give us a lot more ability and flexibility to do some of the things that we've been talking about? Obviously, there's the DPW building, the schools and things like that.
It will give you flexibility to do that. A portion of that will, definitely give you flexibility. You have to remember that the money spent out of free cash doesn't go, it doesn't now have to be raised in the tax rate. So, it is a tax saving to the public. So, having a high free cash is very important because it's monies that come out of, do not come out of the tax rate when you spend them. Originally, they were meant to be in the tax rate, but because now you have this ex, I don't want to say extra cash, you have this free cash. And having this free cash, if you have a project you want to do, somewhere you want to put it, especially a one-time expense, then you are able to not have to fund that with the tax rate. So, there's a savings and a thing.
Well, that was my second.
Now, the other part of your question, I just want to finish this, Patrick, Counselor, rather, is that can we expect this every year? I think we will have, my expectation is that we will have a good amount of free cash. I have to tell you, I'm conservative, and when I talk to the financial markets, they even have me marked in their files as being conservative. So my, when I make an, or a guesstimate or an estimation of what a number may be, for this free cash, I had guesstimated to $2 million. So, it turned out to be six. So, when I heard it and told them about it, they said, well, you're a little off, but to the good. So, they were happy about that. And the city was happy about that. Now, looking at it, can we expect this level every year? That depends. That depends on how tightly we keep to the budget, which we have been, and how tightly we've kept to how the aggressiveness and tax collections have come along. So, we will be, we should be receiving, the way it continues, being tight with the budget, and again, the rest of tax collections, we will see that the, we will see an amount of free cash coming into the city. There were years we didn't have them. If you look down to 2010, you saw $145,000. I mean, that's what we got for free cash. So, you know, it fluctuates, but, you know, there are years that we have other amounts of money in there, and it's important to understand that, you know, it depends on the year, it depends on the revenues come in, and it depends on a number of things like that. But can I peg you a figure? Say, are we going to get $6 million every year? I don't think it would be responsibly to tell you that it would be $6 million every year, but it will be an amount, a good amount, as long as we keep on top of our budget, which this administration has been doing, and again, the aggressive tax collection, those are the two major functions of free cash.
And so, and like I said, and obviously, the last three years, it's been over $5 million, so that's been very nice, and over the last, you know, six out of the last eight years have been, you know, a very good number. Certainly, this is the best, and I'd like to see more of that, but I guess I would say, first, I like that you overpromise and underpromise and overdeliver, very nice. I like to do that as well. But, you know, I would just look at it and keep note in the back of my head, come June, when we're talking about budgets, is trying to figure out a way that we can continue with a lean budget, and then hopefully pass on the savings to taxpayers in the form of a rate change so that we can continue to, you know, I want to bank money, but I don't want to bank all of their money, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Morabito?
Thank you, Madam President. Just have a few questions quickly. Did you mention earlier that there hasn't been a capital stabilization fund established since 2002?
No, there hasn't been a.
Ever.
There hasn't, there's a capital stabilization fund was implemented in 2017. I said the stabilization fund wasn't created, I think, since 2002. The general fund stabilization was implemented, I think, in 2002 or 2003, somewhere around there. Might be 2004.
You said stabilization fund earlier, so I wasn't sure which stabilization was.
Which one? Okay, I understand that.
Implemented in 2002. Also, am I safe to assume that a dash means there was $0 in a year?
Oh, you're talking about the, in 2015?
Yeah.
What happened in 2015? The, 2015 and 2016 were certified together, so the $4,412,074 is for the fiscal years ending June 30th of 2015 and 2016.
So, 2016 is a combo? Combination of two years?
It's a combination between the two. Two years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Morabito?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I have a question, George. Really, nothing to do, I do have one question, but I think Counselor Morabito touched on it, but how close are we, or what is the anticipated year where we're fully funding retirement?
I think the fully funding retirement is, I think, 2033.
2033.
That's the schedule, I believe, we're on. I just, I actually have that scheduled here. I think I have it here. And I believe it was 2033 last I looked.
Okay, and are we mandated, well, I know, you know, we're mandated on the retirement side, but the OPEB side, are they mandating that now, or are they just requesting that?
Well, they really can mandate it, which is the city's choice, but however, they are, they're very, the financial markets are requesting it, and it's up to the city to do what needs to be done. However, if we don't do it, you're going to see a drop in our bond rating for sure, because the, again, I believe it's GASP 74 and GASP, at one time, other post-employee benefits, I would say, six years? Six years, six, let me see, seven, eight. Eight years ago, they never put OPEB benefits on a financial statement, and then I believe GASP 45 was passed, and that required that it be put on the statement. Then, it was also passed that with every two years, you have to have an OPEB actuarial study done, and that's been done, and that's been put in on our financial statements. So, looking at it, now they're looking at, now with 74, GASP 74 and 75, they're looking, okay, now where is your funding schedule? Because you're going to have to come up and fund this, and that's what they're looking at.
Okay. And my second question, if I may, Madam President, just to continue on, it's a follow-up from Counselor Morabito. You know, you see at the end of 2015, I believe, we had stabilization fund of $5.8 million, a little bit, little bit north of that, but there was no certification of free cash, and that's the first time that I can remember since first joining the city council back in 2000, that we haven't certified free cash. Is there any reason why that didn't happen in 2015?
Well, I think it didn't happen in 2015 is because, as I told the financial markets, at that time, the city didn't get to certify it. There are things that were being taken care of, and we're looking at the city not being able to certify it at that time. However, you don't lose free cash. What happens to free cash?
No, I know it rolls over to the following year.
It rolls over to the following year, so that's what happened.
But, you know, you know, I just couldn't figure out as to what the anomaly was that year that we couldn't certify it, yet every other year that I can recall, at least since 2000, we've been able to certify our free cash. I didn't know if there was some particular set of circumstances, or just.
Not something that was outstanding, it was just something that the, I guess, the financial officer at the time could not get to it and get it certified. We had a schedule lay put in, and at a later date, and then at one point, when it got so late, the Department of Revenue recommended, suggested that maybe we should just roll it over to the following fiscal year and do one certification. So, that's what we was decided on, to do the one certification.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, Judge. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Seeing as, one more, Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. So, it looks like Counselor Rizzo asked my questions, but, I mean, obviously, this is good news.
Excellent.
Good news is good news, and you can't, you know, you can't make bad news out of good news. What concerns me is the 2016 figure. We rolled the free cash from 2015 into 2016, and it's still not that big a number.
Right.
That's, so, so we were in, that wasn't great.
Well, it's still a figure.
It's in the plus column, so I guess I shouldn't look a gift toss in the mouth, I guess, but it just, it seems a little odd that those two years seem to take a dip, because we, because in 2015, we had six, so I mean.
2014, we had six.
I mean, 14, yes, I'm sorry. 2014, we had six million. So, anyways, I guess I can never, I can never figure these, I can never make rhyme or reason, that's why I'm not an accountant, and.
Oh.
But anyways, it's, it's good news for the taxpayers, and that's the only message I really have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mal.
Thank you. Seeing as there are no further questions on the council, I'm going to have the clerk call three separate roll calls to take these up. The first is in the general, the second's on water and sewer, and the third is on capital improvement. Madam Clerk?
Shall the city council approve a transfer from the general fund free cash certification to the general fund stabilization account in the amount of $941,037? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. On the second motion, shall the city council approve a transfer from the water and sewer enterprise free cash certification to the water and sewer enterprise stabilization fund in the amount of $741,023? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. And for the third motion, shall the city council approve a transfer from the general fund free cash certification to the capital improvement stabilization fund in the amount of $1,254,716? Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
Thank you.
Before we go into motions, I just want to let everyone know Counselor Rotundo is ill this evening, so we wish him well, and we're going to hold his two motions over to the next meeting, which will be on April 2nd.
So, we have calendar item number eight, motion presented by Counselor Powers, that the mayor requests the owners of Wonderland Park property to appear before a regular meeting of the Revere City Council on April 2nd to advise the council and the residents of Ward 5 as to what is going on with the demolition of Wonderland Park, the disposal of contaminated material, and the lack of snow removal on the sidewalks abutting said property.
Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. There isn't a day that goes by that I don't run into at a supermarket, or get a call from a constituent asking about Wonderland. After much pushing by Counselor Haas and myself, they finally tore it, started to tear it down. Now, I'm hearing all different types of stories out there. I'm hearing that the EPA told them not to remove any more material, to stop what they were doing. I'm hearing that it's a money problem. I'm hearing all different types of stories, and I think they're showing a complete arrogance to the residents of this city, and particularly the residents that surround that area. Now, if in fact there is contamination from asbestos or any other type in those now, I guess, seven or eight piles of rubble, which sends a very negative message to people that drive through our city on a daily basis, if there is contamination in those piles of rubble, at the very least, they should top them and tie those tops down with cement blocks or whatever is necessary to do it. The people of this city, you know, and the thing that really troubles me, this is the second automobile accident they've had down there, bringing cars in and out of the city. Now, the building inspector, at the bequest of Counselor Haas and myself, sent them an order telling them they were in violation of our ordinances by parking the cars down there. They appealed that to the ZBA. On two occasions, they were ordered to have a continuance. Finally, they were given no further continuances. And I myself went up and spoke before the ZBA, and it was a majority vote that they upheld the building inspector's order. I'm told now that they've appealed it to Superior Court, the decision of the building inspector and the ZBA. I would like, at the next meeting, and I realize that the mayor. I would like, at the next meeting, and I realize that the mayor has to sign this communication, this council order, et cetera, and sometimes they're not done for 10 days, but I think a phone call is in order here, to have their attorney and Mr. Chip Tuttle, who I understand is the, running the show down there, up before this city council and give this city council an answer as to what is going on down there, why they've stopped the demolition, when they're going to start the demolition again, when they're going to get the material out of there. And I'd like to add to this motion, Madam Clerk, that the city solicitor appear at that meeting also. Because I want to know firsthand what right they have to park those cars down there once the building inspector and the ZBA has said, get the cars out of there. And I want this city to take some affirmative action and get those cars out of there. They're making dollar after dollar after dollar at the expense of the residents of this city. Cars coming in and in and out of there, accidents down there that are affecting our insurance rates. I think it's time, long overdue, to get that property demoed. And if they want to park cars down there, come before this city council and apply for a special permit, which they have to do before they can even get a license to park cars down there from the licensing board. So I would ask that the representative from there come and also the city solicitor at our next meeting in April, our first meeting, and give us some answers. Give the people of this city some answers and give the residents down there some answers as to what's going on. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Guanasso?
Mr. President, would it be within our rights to request the Revere Police Department to block entrances to that location because we are experiencing difficulty in communicating with the landowners? And we're all under the true belief that there is a violation of the law existing and it doesn't seem like anyone's attending to it? If in fact the challenge was to be made and they really had a desire to keep this location ongoing? As we speak every day, they're making money and they're making fools of the city council. And so, once we stop this tomfoolery, we go after them full-heart. Even if it's not right, we have to do something to prevent the issuance of their access to that location. I think it would behoove all of us to serve, and then we would get results. Because we are experiencing, and people's outrage in this community, large, and I hear it from everybody, there's too much traffic. Well, here we have a location that's housing probably 500, 600 cars. And so this should be a major outrage because it means, these cars do absolutely nothing for the city of Revere. And we're surrounded by these MBTA stations, again, which attract these cars, which are all regional, by the way. And again, what we should do is stop worrying more about the construction that's going on in other cities and towns, not Revere. Because they're the ones that are causing the traffic jams within our community because it's all regional traffic. But getting back to the Wonderland site, they're adding to that insult every day. And so I think it's within our, I think we have to direct the mayor to ask the Revere Police Department to block both entrances of that, and then we'll get their attention. They'll be here right away. And I offer that in the form of a motion.
On, I think it's a verbal motion, so on Councilor Guanasso's motion. His substitute motion, and then we'll go back to the, we're still going to speak on Councilor Powers' motion, but he just offered a motion. To Councilor Guanasso's motion on the floor? Sure.
I'd like to put an amendment on Councilor Guanasso's motion, that we go further than this. Because we've been talking about this for, what, eight months, nine months, 10 months, whatever. Maybe we should go to court and, and put a cease and desist on the parking and go a step further than the police and go have our law office, our lawyers go to Chelsea Court or whatever and get a cease and desist.
Plenty of information. I think if we do a cease.
We're in court already.
I think if we block the entrances, that's a cease and desist. They're, they're stuck within their confines and they can't do anything about it until they move them.
So on Councilor Guanasso's motion, and then we'll return to Councilor Powers. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Councilor Rizzo, on Councilor Guanasso's motion? Would you like to speak? Yes.
Well, I really, well, you know, it's one and the same. And in fact, I agree with Councilor McKenna about the cease and desist. And I think we can do that. We can send the building department down there, we can send the police department down there. You know, the mayor must travel that part of the city once in a while. I mean, it's been week after week, month after month, we see the same thing. Now, it's worse than it was when it was fully up. And this nonsense you hear about the EPA shutting down the job, why would the EPA shut down a job and leave exposed asbestos? If in fact there is asbestos down there, why would they do that? Shut down a job that is removing toxic materials? It does not make any sense to me. And I think the mayor is well within his authority to send the police down there, to send the building department down there, as Councilor Guanasso said, block the entranceways. Those 500 cars or however many they're parking, going to have to find alternative parking somewhere. But to be shunned by any business owner, the way that this city has been, at the expense of residents that live down in that area, is just not something that we should tolerate. And I hope that the mayor gets this message first thing tomorrow morning and takes action on it. Because it is well within his purview to do so. And it's about time that, you know, we start requesting and asking for things as opposed to mandating. You know, we have little business owners like we had here tonight, little business owners that are just trying to make a living, that initially, the poor guy got railroaded, you know, I guess it was, you know, as, as Councilor Zambudo said, without malice, but got railroaded, but still persevered and tries to do all the right things. And now we have a business down there worth millions and millions and millions of dollars that thumbs their nose at the city of Revere. It is outrageous to me and I wholeheartedly support Councilor Guanasso's motion, Councilor Powers' premise, and I do support Councilor McKenna's amendment to actually issue a cease and desist. Let's, let them take us to court. Let's go to court. That's why we have a city solicitor. That's why we have outside legal counsel. Okay? But let's not let this go one more day without this city council taking action. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with everybody who spoke. Unfortunately, the side of me that worries, worries about the legal precedents here, but I'm going to throw caution to the wind and support my colleagues, even though I'm reluctant. I think we should be getting legal opinion before we block the entranceways, but I'm willing to get somebody's attention, so I think we'll take a shot. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Patch?
Thank you, Madam President. I also agree with all my colleagues. We've been talking about this now for, I don't know how many motions we've had in for the last.
Years.
Year or two about this, and we haven't got any answers. I don't understand why. It's, I can remember one, one motion that Councilor Powers, I don't know if he put it in, but he's been on top of this issue for quite a while now, that I said at a meeting, we should go down and tow all the cars. And that was, that was like either months or a year or over a year ago. I mean, what, why don't we have a response? Why, what is the problem here? The city has the, as far as I know, the city is the, has the power to go down there and use their enforcement. That's why they have a building and a health department. So, again, Council, Council Rizzo is right. I mean, we keep putting motions in and we're not getting, we're not getting responses. So I hope, you know, this time, because I tell you, it's an embarrassment to this council. I don't know if the rest of yous get the complaints that I do about, you know, why don't you get anything done down there? Why don't you, I says, I says, listen, we put the motions in, we, we do, we do our job. So, you know, it's up to the administration. I mean, what else, I, I, I'll put it right where the blame's got to go. He's got to, he's got to do something. So that's all I'm going to say. I'll probably get in trouble for saying it, but maybe we'll get something done, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor again.
Thank you, Madam President. My understanding is that the general contractor that got that contract down there is Plumhouse. And I, if we can, I would like to request a representative from Plumhouse to come up along with our city solicitor and Mr. Chip Tuttle of Suffolk Downs, that they own that, well, a lot of Suffolk Downs now, formerly, they own that property. It's, it's crazy what's going on. And I think this motion should go right into the mayor's office tomorrow morning and a phone, and three or four phone calls be made to get those people up here at the next meeting and at least explain to the people what's going on. And I think it's important we get our city solicitor up here because the last thing I want to do is put the city of Revere in financial jeopardy legally with that organization. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue. I've been sitting in this crowd for over a year now and this issue has come up repeatedly. I think that the time for conversation with these folks is over. I'd like to see some execution, and I commend Councilor Guanasso for his motion. I think it's fantastic that it's time to take some action. I have some concerns. If this is contaminated material, we just got buried with snow. That snow's starting to melt. Are those contaminants now leaking out into the nearby neighborhood? I don't know. Do you? I don't think we do. And I think that it's overdue. And, you know, I can, I can appreciate bringing them up here. We definitely need to get the city solicitor involved. I'm not sure why he hasn't been involved already, has he? It's been over a year. It's time for action. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may, I will say, I do believe this issue is in court right now, so I know our city solicitor is on top of it, but there's no excuse. It needs to end. It's been going on for far too long. It's been a blighted piece of land now for several years and it's long overdue and it's about time. And if they're not going to take any action, maybe we should go put our cars down there, do something about it. It's ridiculous. On the motion, as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So ordered.
Go for the business, Council President.
At this time, we're going to take a moment of silence in memory of a member of the Revere Fire Department that we lost, Michael Amori. And the service will be tomorrow, Vertugio's from 3 to 8. Thank you. And our thoughts are with his family during this very difficult time. There's no further business. The city council will be adjourned until April 2nd.